For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of September 3rd, 2019. Call the order, please.
Hess?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noak?
Here.
Walagora?
Here.
Please rise for the plate.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got a couple modifications to the agenda this evening.
I'd like to add two proclamations, Tunnel to Towers and Thirty Days of Peace.
Second.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye. Any other modifications? Excuse me, sorry. Approval of the minutes for the regular session and closed session of August 19th, 2019. Any issues or changes? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during tonight's meeting you're allowed to address council. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
Hello, my name is Todd Bowman. I live at 514 South Fifth Street. And there were some currents and concerns of the neighborhood about the Bingham School project. And I have a petition of about 25 names that are not interested in this project happening in our neighborhood for various reasons, from everything from the parking to, we believe it would be chaos within our neighborhood. And we have experienced before with the charter school that used to be there. I actually had people drive through my yard, through, across the alley and through her property onto Washington Avenue twice in one week. That made me put up a fence. We've had people come in our yard and use our picnic table. This is when it was a charter school. And we just do not want anything like this in our area because we're afraid it's just going to grow into chaos for our neighborhood. I have a copy of the petition if you would like it.
We have it. I was just going to make note, Todd, that we do have the petition. I'm assuming it's the same one that went through the planning commission?
Yes, it would be.
We have that. And some notes and responses from your comments there as well.
Okay. There are other people here from our neighborhood that would support me that are in this meeting right now. I don't know what else there is for me to say except that, you know, we're not against this building being used. We're just against it affecting us is what we're looking at.
I understand.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
And as I mentioned, Todd's and other comments from neighboring residents are in our notes for the planning commission meeting as well. Anyone else this evening? On the consent agenda?
Do you have one more?
Oh, I do? Oh, please.
Is it okay to talk about the project even though the pilot is on the agenda? Is it okay to take a few minutes?
If you have a comment, sure.
Yeah, I didn't want to be out of order. My name is Virgie. I'm from Hope Network. And we're the developers for the property. Any questions? So I just wanted to take a few minutes introducing myself and just let the city council know how much I appreciate being here tonight, not only to discuss the pilot later, but just to answer any questions regarding the senior living and the use of that property. We think will be relatively calm in that neighborhood. But we have plenty of other senior living across the state and we don't ever have any challenges with neighbors and, you know, relationships. So always, always good neighbors and always friendly folk to have around. We're looking forward to the possibility of being able to, you know, help out by creating the housing in your neighborhood. So I just wanted to let that be known. And my address is 202 Golf View Drive. And that's in Plainwell. And that's about 45 minutes south of Grand Rapids. Thank you.
Thank you, Virgie. On the consent agenda this evening, A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $677,818.54. And B is a council appointment of John Brewers to the zoning board of appeals to fill a vacancy which expires 10/1/19.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It is only for a month because that's when it expires and we can't do it for more than a term. So it'll be up at the next meeting.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
The presentations or announcements, we do now have two mero proclamations. Sorry, allergy season for me. First, I'll start with Thirty Days of Peace. Whereas the first annual Thirty Days of Peace began on September 11th, 2007, and this is the 13th year that honored the first anniversary of Mahatma Gandhi's creation of the modern nonviolent movement and concluded on October 10th, the birthday of the late international journalist and musician Daniel Pearl. And whereas the central focus of Thirty Days is the International Day of Peace or Peace Day held annually on September 21st. And whereas we in Alpena are celebrating our 13th annual Thirty Days of Peace presented by the Alpena Coalition for Peace and supported by LARCC, we have collaborated with our local community to lend our unique expression of this event. And whereas for us, it means to increase awareness, educate and inspire persons in our community to embrace peace as a choice. And we do this through providing dynamic speakers who challenge us to think beyond our own experience, films which educate and inform, open panel discussions which help us to see both sides of issues, the arts and music whose universal language helps us to experience a spirit of unity, and religious experiences which open our souls to a deeper prayer and more peaceful way of living. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim September 11th to October 10th, 2019, as Thirty Days of Peace in Alpena and encourage the participation of all public, private, and home school students to participate in the peace contest and peace concert and all citizens to be involved in the scheduled activities held during the occasion found at the Alpena County Library, Alpena Senior Citizen Center, and other locations throughout the community and as advertised on the Alpena News. Carol Ski over with us this evening. And my next one is for the Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers. Whereas the Siller family started the Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation to honor the memory of their brother Stephen, a New York firefighter FDNY who lost his life on September 11th, 2001 after strapping on his gear and running through the Brooklyn Battery Tunnel to the Twin Towers. And whereas the goal of the Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation is to continue Stephen's legacy by supporting our nation's first responders and service members. And their mission is to honor the sacrifice of firefighter Stephen Siller who laid down his life to save others on September 11th, 2001 and to honor our military and first responders who continue to make the supreme sacrifice of life and limb for our country. And whereas Building for America's Bravest, a program of the Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation constructs specially adapted smart homes for our most catastrophically injured service members. Each home is custom designed to address the unique needs of each individual, energy efficient, automated, and easily accessible. These homes use adaptive technology to help our most severely injured heroes live better, more independent lives. And whereas the Fallen First Responder Program supports the families of our law enforcement, firefighters, and emergency workers that lost their lives under extraordinary circumstances in the line of duty. And whereas the Gold Star Family Program honors the legacy of those who made the ultimate sacrifice while serving our country, the foundation provides 100% mortgage-free home to the surviving spouse with young children. And whereas the Tunnel to Towers 5K Run Walk Series was created to retrace the final steps of Stephen Siller, the Run Walk event pays homage to the first responders who made and continue to make extraordinary sacrifices in the line of duty. And whereas the Alpena Tunnel to Towers 5K Run Walk will be held on September 14th, 2019, starting at the Ban Shell at Bayview Park. Registration begins at 9:00 AM. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim September Saturday, September 14th, 2019, as Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Recognition Day in the City of Alpena and encourage residents to participate in the events following the suggestions on the website or Facebook page and support all of our local public safety officers and service members. And we have several votes from the foundation. Okay. Public hearings. Next up, we have a report of officers' cost and voter turnout for the August 6th, 2019 election.
The costs for the August 6th special election totaled $12,256, which was billed to the Alpena County Library. For the November 5th election, we will once again be consolidating the precincts temporarily to reduce expenses. The city had 8,202 registered voters at the time of the election, which is an increase of 12 voters since the May election. The voter turnout was 12.52%, which equals 1,027 voters cast. Of that total, 289 votes, or 28%, were absentee ballots. Of the 1,027 voters, 765 were age 60 and older. There were 585 females that voted versus 442 males. The largest group of voters at 435, or 42%, was once again comprised of females age 60 and older.
Thank you. You want to read, receive and file that bill or is this just information?
That can just be information, I don't think we need to file it.
Next is communications and petitions. We have Target Alpena Development Corporation Annual Report for 2018-19. Jim Clare, it's you.
Thank you for your support. Thanks for having me and thanks to everyone who puts forward so much effort to make our community a better place. I'll start out with our activity summary with the city of Alpena. And I'll start out, I guess, with the idea, wrapped around the idea of the former APC site, as you saw in your package. You know, we probably, a little bit over three years, we've been working towards a mixed-use development there, residential with commercial first floor. And about a month ago, we executed a purchase agreement, more or less an option to purchase, with a developer that, while we do due diligence and that kind of thing on our market, on the site itself and that kind of thing, it will all, hopefully, all lead towards that end. There's hurdles in front of us and some obstacles, one of which I have to share with you, one of which is, not so much do we think we have the demand, we think that the demand is there, but it's really aligning the cost of construction with what we think the market will bear as from a unit perspective. And it will also, the other part is understanding who the first four tenants might be in advance of an investment being made. So depending on the square footage of space that might be, you know, available for commercial development and whether it's on that site or if I looked at John Henry's building, the former antique mall, significant footprints which you have to find probably multiple tenants for in advance of the development. So those kind of a couple of the articles, but the if and when, the unit mixes, if and when, that market data and that kind of thing will be, will lead us down a path as to what will actually get built there in what quantities, whether they're one bedrooms, two bedrooms, or whatever. And hopefully, it's really, at this point, it's a math issue. And that's really where we're at in it. So as we progress towards that, we'll keep you obviously updated and we're working with Adam and his office and Reg and his office to make sure that we have our ducks in a row. Now, in addition to that, this past summer, we also optioned all six lots that we have in Commerce Industrial Park. There's six left and there's three groups of twos. A downstate developer is looking at a development, not sure what, which one of those set of twos this client might want. But we're hopeful here in the coming months that we will probably be down to four lots as a whole. So spend a lot of time coming, there's still some good lots in there if people are interested. But right now, at this point, he's optioned all of them until a decision made on what two they'll pick. We've met with several developers regarding potential redevelopment sites and vacant sites, really wrapped around residential, whether apartments or condos or townhouses and that kind of thing. People are expressing interest in that. Our market is driving some of that. Really, if you looked at our real estate market today versus where it was maybe eight years ago, it's really different. I've had people, it's been building to a crescendo, and I've had people come to us telling us stories right now that if it goes up on the market, it's a decent product, and it goes up at 8 o'clock in the morning, you better have an offer above asking price in by 5:00 or you're not going to get it. I had three people approach me over the last month and tell me they actually received or sold their houses for tens of thousands more than they were asking. So there's somewhat of a bidding war going out there on certain products and that kind of thing, which is, really, to me, it really speaks to our value proposition. And something I've been watching for a long time is I've said, hey, we're making all of these investments are being made around town, whether that's business in the form of businesses or whether that's in the form of investments in splash parks or whatever, you know, it might be. I always wonder why is our real estate market lagging to a certain degree and not growing at the rate that I thought it would. But long story short is I think we're hitting the top of that mountain right now and our value proposition is coming to the forefront. Also, our unemployment rate, if you took a look at May, lowest recorded May going back to 1990, I think it was at 3.9%, which is incredible. We always bump up a little bit in that June reporting and that's when, you know, students and that kind of thing come out of school. So we get a little bump there and then we kind of equalize a little bit, so, but we're ahead of the curve. One other thing I would touch on, obviously, Kmart was, the former Kmart building was in the news a couple of weeks ago. We are working with the township on the rezone from that property to, from commercial to light industrial and hope to have that wrapped up in about the next month. And also there, we've met with property owners and provided a lot of developers and that kind of thing with information on the area. Our small business development activity summary that was in your package, I'll run through, I'll run through all of that. The county had 90 clients served, there were 283 counseling hours, 13 business starts, 20 jobs created, 20 jobs retained, most of those are obviously through expansions and that kind of thing. Capital formation about 1.5 million. In that, which was included in those numbers are the city numbers, which are 56 clients served, 193 business hours, counseling hours, eight business starts, 11 jobs created and about 436,000 in capital investment. Our loans parallied, I'll give you an idea, our typical year, a typical year for us is 10 businesses, 10 loans, about a million and a half in capital formation as a whole, as a whole. And this year, we've already made seven loans so far this year to parallel the SBDC counseling hours and the expansions and new business starts that are in the package that I just outlined. And another part of our loan portfolio is the Small Business Administration approached us about a month ago to ascertain our interest in becoming a Small Business Administration lender. So we'll be exploring that throughout the fall to see what that means, but right now we have two loan portfolios. One of them is an EDA that we can make in Alpena County only. We have a micro revolving loan fund which covers, which we can use outside the county and we have loan stretching to Gaylord, we have them in Sheboygan. We can make, you know, loans where they're needed outside of our general area. So this would be a third, this would be a third if we ended up reaching an agreement with them. In addition to all of that, our relationship with the Chamber obviously is very, very strong and we work very closely together on economic development efforts. And what some of that looks like is the Chamber obviously continues to engage with Alpena High School students on educational attainment and workforce development initiatives, going into 11th graders now for five weeks to teach career readiness skills. And they also connect with job shadowing opportunities. And most recently, they started a dialogue with educators at Alpena Community College to bring some of those, some of that similar training to their classrooms. The Chamber has focus on offering educational opportunities to businesses on the topics of leadership, human resources issues, and more. And they're on track to offer more educational opportunities in 2019 than any other year prior. They also partner with other organizations and programming, the LAP and AC Accident Fund Insurance and that kind of thing along those lines. The Chamber also is, continues to hold a Michigan One-Stop Operator Contract for Michigan Works and that's the third year in evaluating them. They also, the Chambers, I don't know if you've seen it, The Young and Successful in Alpena, which is a video series, has been really popular. And that really is, the purpose of the series is to fight back against the perception of that we're a retirement community and to show the youth in the area that it's possible to make a living and, you know, and life living here. And then lastly, the Chamber is a partner, obviously, with the Northern Michigan Chamber Alliance and has worked on a variety of legislative issues as it pertains to businesses in northern Michigan. So that kind of, you know, if I put all of that in a, you know, in a close, I guess tonight, we're doing very well. We're doing very well as a community, whether it's people that are here now, whether it's people that haven't visited us for a couple of years. We've been approached by a little bit of everyone over the last, you know, the last year that are amazed at when they come to town. They're simply amazed. And a lot of that is the work the city puts forward, the township puts forward in our area. A lot of it is the work the private sector is putting forward and it's exciting to see. And I think we're seeing the fruits of all of that effort now. So that's in a nutshell, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I have no questions.
No, I appreciate it. Pretty complete.
Great report.
Thank you. Thank you so very much for all you do.
I move we submit and file.
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Next up is new business. The MDOT Maintenance Contract. Rich Solinger?
Yeah. Michigan Department of Transportation contracts with local road agencies to perform maintenance activities on state truck line sections. City of Alpena contracts with Michigan Department of Transportation to maintain 23 and 32 within the City of Alpena. That previous agreement, the existing agreement is set to expire the end of September. We have received the MDOT Maintenance Agreement for the period of October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2024. Upon review of the document, most of the changes were language-related for clarity. There is one significant change for the new contract. Reporting and reimbursements will be done on a bimonthly basis in lieu of the previous quarterly basis. This will result in two additional reports, submittals by the city, but will also result in a quicker reimbursement of MDOT related expenses paid out by the city. Upon review of the contract, as my recommendation, the city engineer and the council approved MDOT Contract 2019-0627, being the MDOT Maintenance Contract. This should be done by resolution, naming the city clerk and city engineer to execute the contract on behalf of the city. We switched from the mayor normally signs it, we have to use the MDOT's digital signature process. So we changed it over to recommend that myself and Anna would sign that contract on behalf of the city. Not trying to cut you off.
Bye, man. Rates going up?
Basically, we get reimbursed for our labor, equipment, and they establish the equipment rental rates to us that we can use. We do get an overhead percentage, depends on the dollar value of the contract at the end of the fiscal year. It varies from 7% to 11% depending on what that dollar amount is. But it's, basically covers our expenses incurred.
Any other questions for Rich?
Any concerns, Bill?
I don't have any.
None?
We did send a copy over to Bill.
Yep.
I move we approve the contract 2019-0627 and allow the city clerk and city engineer to sign our behalf.
Noak?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is water treatment plant supervisory control and data acquisition upgrades.
On August 13th, the city received an open proposal for the water treatment plant supervisory control and data acquisition, SCADA, upgrades. The work encompasses the following: purchases and installation. Three computers with software, remote telemetry to the 9th Street Tower, North Industrial Tower, North Industrial Pump Station, new alarm and notification system, integrate, integration of the township tower data, filtration control, valving, electronic valve actuators, new turbidimeters and 11 turbidity transmitters, chlorine analyzers, sludge removal, system integration, and all programming to integrate the data and generate the appropriate reporting. Three bids were received as follows: Tempest Enterprises out of Gaylord, $222,530.5. Core Tech Services out of Royal Oak, $349,712. And EIM out of Watersneet, Michigan, $526,979. Upon review of the bids and the recommendation of the water treatment plant personnel, as my recommendation, the city engineer and the city council award the water treatment plant SCADA upgrades to Tempest Enterprises, excuse me, in the amount upgrades to Tempest Enterprises, excuse me, in the amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and five cents. Tempest Enterprises has been performing work at the water treatment plant on various projects over the past three years with water treatment staff completely satisfied by the work performed in a professional way it was completed. The city has a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in the current budget for the SCADA upgrades and one hundred thousand dollars in the current budget for replacement of the filtration controls, which has been incorporated into this project in bid, plus sufficient funding, two hundred and sixty-five thousand is available to complete this project.
No questions, sir. Anyone?
No.
Okay. I move we award the water treatment SCADA upgrades to Tempest Enterprises in the amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and five cents.
Second. Walagora?
Hi.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up is the presentation in first reading of ordinance nineteen dash four-four-eight to rezone property located at five-five-five South Fifth Avenue from R2 to plan unit development district. Presentation from Adam Paul.
Good evening. Bingham School is vacant elementary school located at five-five-five West Fifth and an R2 zoning district located in neighborhoods consisting primarily of single-family homes. The applicant Hope Network has submitted a site plan for forty-unit independent senior living building, which was later reduced to thirty-five units. As the units in the, that were located in gymnasium were eliminated to obtain historic tax credits. This would include an addition of a wing on the rear of the building in order to increase the overall residence count. Bingham School has previously been utilized as a public school and a charter school, but the charter school left the building several years ago and eventually sold the building to a private company. As far as zoning issues, property in question is zone R2, single-family residence district, which is typical for schools as they are permitted, have permitted use in a residential district with a special permit. The, the applicant is requesting a conversion to a multifamily built, multifamily building specifically for independent income restricted senior housing. At the site, as the site is among single-family homes, a plan unit development or PUD appears to be the appropriate zoning district as any significant change to the design or scope in the future would have to go through a public hearing process. The site does meet the, or exceed the minimum requirements to be zoned PUD. The use of residential housing would appear to be the best use for the existing building. Staff would note there's a trend with school systems, they prefer new building, new buildings as opposed to older buildings due to lack of modern systems and amenities. Assuming the trend continues, the odds of this building being utilized as a school would appear to be low. Site plan again shows forty units, or I'm sorry, forty off-street parking spaces and appears to show the possibility of utilizing the local streets for any overflow parking needs. Street spaces would not be reserved for the residents of this development, but would be available on a first-come, first-served basis and open to all neighborhood residents, which is currently just how it is right now. The applicants have indicated they would buffer the parking areas and the new addition from the neighboring residences. Staff would put a condition, or staff has added a condition that a six-foot privacy fence is required to be constructed along the property line shared with the residences to the northwest. The existing building does, does appear to be historic in nature. Staff records show it was constructed in nineteen thirty-six and there are a few, and there are a few large-scale masonry buildings left in Alpena and even fewer outside of downtown. The applicants have agreed to a condition that requires the addition to be clad with masonry and match the style of the existing historic building. Staff has received a, a letter which included, was included in the packet and noting several concerns regarding the proposed development. In addition, staff was presented with a petition, Matt we spoke about earlier, at the planning commission meeting signed by a number of residents in the area opposed to the use. At the meeting, the main issues of concern appeared to be the presence of adequate off-street parking and the concern that site would be, and the concern that street, on-street parking would be reserved for the development. Concerns were also mentioned that although this is reserved for residents age fifty-five and up, that could change in the future. The applicant has indicated they would lose their financial status if residency was opened to anybody under fifty-five and that forty off-street parking, forty off-street parking areas would be more than adequate for the, for the residents as many of the typical residents in this type of development do not own a car. At the April twenty meeting, Planning Commission did approve the request eight to zero with the following conditions: that the, a new addition be constructed with a flat roof and by masonry exterior, six-foot privacy fence be included on the adjoining lots to the northwest, the dumpsters screened with masonry on three sides, and a landscape plan is completed meeting any zoning ordinance criteria prior to construction. So staff would request that the attached ordinance receive its first reading on, on tonight and go to the second reading on September sixteenth.
Questions? Any questions for Adam?
Yeah, just.
Perhaps Burge if necessary?
Yeah, just, just a couple, just to, you know, kind of address some of the concerns that were brought up at the planning commission, you know, and, and I spoke to you earlier about this too, the parking, you know?
Sure.
Typically, in any housing development, is it, is it typical to have two parking spots per unit? Is that a typical thing and this is different because of, you know, what is the primary purpose of this property is?
Well, there's a couple things the zoning ordinance covers. Typical market rate development open to anybody would usually require one and a half to two spaces per a typical unit. That being said, the zoning ordinance does talk about elder, elderly living developments and they only require one, one parking spot for every four residents, or one for every four units. Generally, that's, that seems relatively low because that would only require ten spaces for forty units and they only have thirty-five plus the maximum amount of staff on, which probably won't be more than three at any given time. But obviously, you know, ten spaces plus thirteen seems a little low, but ultimately forty would be one, one per unit, be thirty-five, and then additional of staff is about three, about three at max at a given time. So it would appear to be adequate. And the zoning ordinance, as I mentioned, does specify that elderly housing has much lower requirements for that.
And if I understood what was in here as well, if the primary purpose, if it's, if it's changed to any other purpose, it would have to come back for, you know, there, any other housing, I should say, any other housing beyond what it's currently being asked for, would have to come back to the planning commission and to us, or?
If there are any significant changes in the design either before or after construction, those, those changes would have to come back through the hearing process as part of the PUD, a PUD modification. So right now, we're looking at the submitted site plan and the, our zoning district we're creating is based on that site plan that's provided. So if they change the design or scope, that would come back to the planning commission and then the council. If they try to change, for instance, the age limits, that is part of the pilot ordinance we'll be discussing next, and that would have financial ramifications for the product, for the project.
Okay. I'm sorry, what was your first name again?
Burge.
Burge. Is it typical for the parking in your other developments, is this, is this a typical site plan that you, you've used or has it been different in past projects?
No, it's very similar. In fact, I have a senior living in Rockford and we have, we probably have a little over one-for-one there, but we never use more than half.
Okay.
So unless it's Thanksgiving or Christmas, we're not, the parking laws never fall.
Okay, all right, yeah, just wondering about that. You said Rockford, Michigan, is there other developments that you have that can be viewed? Have you done something like this in the past where it's in a residential neighborhood?
Yeah, so I've got similar properties in Greenville, I have one in Bowdine, one in, a small one in Kalamazoo, I've got one in Battle Creek.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I could pick up six or seven that I can think of right off. Parking is always a zoning issue, but it's never a use issue.
Okay. I have nothing more, Mr. Mayor.
I would just like to address some of this neighborhood and I like historic buildings. I think that this is a perfect use for this building and will have low impact on the neighborhood. I look forward to it. I don't think that we'll have the congestion there that we did with the school and even with the school that was limited to, you know, fifteen minutes in the morning and fifteen minutes in the afternoon. I look forward to this project. And the comment that was made earlier, I, we live on Washington Avenue, we don't suffer consequences from Fifth Avenue, we suffer them from Washington Avenue. It's just, and it's just the general traffic that goes up and down Washington Avenue. I think this is a perfect project and a perfect place.
I am, my biggest concern was, was with the residents and the parking and it seems to be answered for. It certainly exceeds, exceeds the minimum requirement for this type of housing facility. And I'm sure that it's been explained that, that if there is overflow at any given time in the winter time, there's, it's not twenty-four hours, so someone can't park on the street and stay overnight in the facility. But as long as they're aware of that, it seems as though that there's enough parking for what's required. Can only assume that it'll be the same as some of the other housing facilities that they have, and I guess I'd have to agree with the planning commission comments and Cindy's that I just, I can't really even imagine something else fitting that building. It's been vacant for many years and I don't foresee a school, not that I'm a pro at schools or anything, but I just don't see a school moving back in there and I just can't imagine someone paying an amount of money to have it destroyed and having a, a house put up would be astronomical cost, so having the building stay seems appropriate. So I really don't have too many concerns.
One other thing I did, I was asked this one approached by a resident over in that area too, and, and this one I, I don't know, I don't know great, maybe you can offer some insight, but typically, a building like this that's being completely renovated has a tendency to raise values of homes around and surrounding neighborhoods. I know it's, you're not an assessor by, by trade, but you are a tack of all trades sometimes.
Well, I think the estimated cost is just under eight million dollars to rehab plus put the addition on. So it's a significant investment that I would say certainly as compared to if it was a school again or an office or anything else that it would not, you know, I, I just can't see where it would have a negative value on, on property values. Obviously, I'm not an assessor, we could get that information and if you like, Adam could certainly check with Allenberg, but before the next meeting when you actually have to vote on both of these ordinances and give you that information, but I, I would not see it with the kind of investment that's being made and with the requirements of the pilot for the funding, maintaining the property and keeping it up is going to be a high priority. And so don't see that as an issue.
Okay. No, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing more. For the second time.
A question, I see that for the tenants served, it says that serve seniors making between thirty percent and eighty percent of the area median income. Can you give a ballpark idea of what, what range that is for income?
I wish I could. You know, someone asked me that the last time and I didn't think to look it up. I'm sorry, I don't know, I could look it up and let you know the next time.
Okay, I just, yeah, I just wanted to know where that, where that fell.
Just to touch base on that, we've had some other MSHDA projects that we've done downtown that were also income restricted. And generally, and I don't want to, we can find you more details in a bit, but it was anywhere, I don't know what the low end was, but the high end was somewhere around forty-five K a year or something along those lines, but I could be a little off, so I'll get you a better date.
Okay.
Yeah, because eighty percent would be considered moderate income, thirty percent is probably very low. Do they, is there a percentage breakdown in terms of how many within certain, whether it's low, very low, low, moderate of what percent you have to rent out to?
There is, and I don't have that one, so.
Bring it back at the next meeting.
We do have a model, yeah.
Because I, usually, most of them would be dealing with MSHDA, they usually have that broken down, the what percent you're required within those categories.
Okay, sounds like the, the range is off from thirty to eighty percent that there, some are going to be there, maybe living at a very limited income, but others could be retirees that just have a fixed income, but, okay.
I would also note that as, as Jim spoke regarding our vacancy rates and things like that, like last year we had a study that Jim and I got to, a peruse that said right now with, for the apartment units in town that are actually part of a, attached to each other and that kind of thing, we have a ninety-seven, or last summer, we had a ninety-seven point five percent occupancy for income restricted housing, ninety-nine percent for market rate. So there's definitely a need.
Very good. Any other questions prior to, two weeks from now? So then, of course, was first reading, so then we'll be back on the.
Bill has to.
You have to read the whole?
Yes.
This is the short one.
This ordinance number nineteen dash four-four-eight, be it ordained by the municipal council of the city of Alpena, state of Michigan as follows: the zoning ordinance of the city of Alpena being ordinance number three ninety-two establishing zoning districts, the schedule of regulations and zoning map is hereby amended and revised in the following manner: the zoning classification of the following described parcels are hereby changed from R2, one-family residential, to PUD, planned unit development. Legally described as five-five-five South Fifth, it's lots one, two, three, four, five, seven, and the alley adjacent to lots two, three, five, and seven, block one-seventeen, Fletcher's second addition to the city. It also includes the property at five-five-five South Fifth. And the provisions of this ordinance shall take effect ten days after being adopted by the municipal council and be published.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up is a presentation in first reading of ordinance nineteen four dash four-four-nine to authorize the payment of an annual service charge in lieu of taxes for residential units serving elderly low-income persons or families. Adam?
Apologize in advance, this is a pretty acronym-heavy staff report, but we'll, we'll slow down, let me know if I go using too many. In any case, as we discussed, Hope Network is requesting to remodel a former Bingham School. As part of the request, their subsidiary, Bingham School Limited Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership, save that by, has requested payment in lieu of taxes, pilot, as the acronym there. The proposed development would consist of thirty-five units reserved for income restricted independent senior living. The proposed project would rely on the use of low-income housing tax credits, or LITEC, which require the establishment to, to obtain a pilot to provide assurance that the tax burden will remain in line with the income and affordable nature of the proposed development for the life of the loan, in this case forty years. The pilot ordinance would restrict the primary residents, residents to fifty-five years of age and allow them to have someone else living with them that could be, would be as low as fifty years or older. The ordinance notes that any units containing someone else that does not meet the age or income requirements would be taxed, would be taxed at the full amount of adware and taxes. Proposed pilot would be established at a rate of ten percent of the annual shelter rent less the cost of furnished utilities and continue for the term of financing MSHDA regulatory oversight forty years. At ten percent, the annual, the expected annual pilot was calculated by the applicants at twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and roughly thirty percent of that amount would remain with the city, while the other seventy percent would be divided among the taxing jurisdictions. The applicant did do some, did do some preliminary calculations regarding the construction costs of seven point seven-nine-three million and they did some calculations regarding potential tax, tax revenue that would be generated by a market rate project. I, staff believes those, those calculations from the applicant were a little high, but adware tax would be significantly more than the pilot would generate. Due to the significant difference, city staff is often very critical of developments that require a pilot as they're often either utilizing property that could be used for market rate housing, that would generate adware tax amount, amount, or they're trying to convert an existing property that generates adware taxes. This is generally not simply to build tax base, but additional residential units in the city require additional services to be provided, which utilize city resources. In this instance, the building in question has been a school for most of its history, which did not generate any revenue for the city and it was utilized as a charter school for several years and has been vacant in private ownership the last few years. When utilized as a charter school, the building had taxable values between a hundred and forty-seven and a hundred and fifty thousand and, and the building was, and when the building was vacant in twenty eighteen and nineteen, the taxable value dropped to about eighty-eight thousand. Old-school buildings are often difficult to develop due to their specific architectural features such as wide hallways and standalone classrooms. features such as wide hallways and standalone classrooms. In addition, most school systems prefer to use newer buildings, as we discussed in the last staff report, because it's doubtful a school will relocate to this building and the difficulty of developing a school for market rate housing, as well as the fact that for most of its history, this particular building didn't generate any revenue for the city, staff would not be opposed to, for a development that would require a pilot in this location. The proposed $7.793 million investment in this development would provide work for local contractors and improve the overall quality and quantity of the low-mod housing stock available for seniors in the city. Although the development will be tax-exempt, it is the intent of the federal government and MISTHA for them to remain so, so long as there's a need for low-mod housing in the city. Based on census data and anecdotal information from the city's rental programs, it is apparent the need for such housing is still present and will continue to be for the foreseeable future. Consequently, staffer does support the rehab of 35 rental units by Bingham School Limited Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership and the approval of a new 10% pilot covering the development as part of the firm's LITEC application. If council incurs, staff would request you review, read the attached ordinance 19-449 and receive its first reading this evening.
Since the school closed some, what'd you say, three years ago? Is it longer than that? Longer than that?
Probably a little longer than that, but at least-
Six or seven.
Six or seven years ago. How has that property been on the text since when it's just a vacant school? Is it still a school?
It's not still a school, it's in private ownership at the moment, so it is generating taxes, but because it's vacant, like I said, the last two years have been significantly lower than what it was a charter school even.
Yeah, it was eight, yeah, you listed eight, we had a taxable value of 88,000 right now.
Oh, okay, I was, sorry about that. I was reading ahead of you.
There would have been a lot of housing in that area.
As Adam said, and I've probably been the biggest critic of pilots, because once a pilot, it is always a pilot in my mind, because you see here it's 40 years, and generally what happens is in between, you know, well before the 40 years is of, they're wanting to, as the Worske brothers did, or father-son did, I don't know, five years, well, probably longer than that, I was still the planning director, all those apartments up north of Long Rapids Road that they owned, they spent several million dollars rehabbing all of them, and we ended up redoing the pilots into one big pilot. So they continue on, so, you know, they never get off. They're not like a tax abatement that has a set number of years and they're gone. Those are already in existence. This year was, for the most part, the history has been, it's not produced any revenue anyways. So I, my feeling is it's something that can be done and is beneficial, and it's probably the only way that you're going to get development on that project, because at a market rate, if somebody was doing it privately, the cost, where you can see what the costs are, would be so high in what the rents, it just wouldn't work. It wouldn't work within our community. So we are supportive, but we did also stress and that we would not recommend the council less than the 10%, which is at the high end of MISTHA, and it's what we've done. And when we redid all those with the Worske, they were all at, it was one new one at 10%. So that's what we've been targeting when we do have and recommend a pilot to council.
So you said once a pilot, always a pilot?
That's my book.
But, and I understand that, but, so who, who controls the requirements for the pilot in the event that, as you mentioned before, because we were talking about at some point, and it's nothing, it's nothing personal to Burgi and her team, I'm just, we're just trying to work out everything that might develop, but in the future, if you decide that you're going to lower, you want to lower the age limit, or you want to go into some, something that doesn't, no longer meets the requirements for the pilot, who controls that? The city, or is that another?
There's a lot of-
So it's just the city ordinance? So the pilot is completely controlled and the requirements are answered to us?
The ordinance does stipulate that if there, if any units are not in compliance, it does converge to ad valorem taxes for that unit.
And controlled only by us, it is something we have.
Well, we, well, once, if we found out, we would then have the assessor go through and we figure that unit or units. So if they took half the units and said we're going to go to, you know, allow younger people and their families, whatever, young, you know, then all those units would no longer be under a pilot. They would be removed because they violate the ordinance that's been agreed upon. And this is basically standard language put together by, I assume, MISTHA, and is standard for pretty much all pilots.
Have you, has that happened in any of your previous projects that you've worked on that you're aware of at all?
The uses reverted?
Yeah, the uses reverted to younger, you know, not what it was originally established for elderly housing.
So that would be really difficult to do. Not only are we required by your pilot to serve a certain population or by the PUD that you will have passed, but we're also required by our investors to serve a particular population that we have requested to serve, and their investment in our project is based on us doing what we said we would do. So we actually don't have the option to change the pattern or the population that we serve. The only way that would ever happen is at the end of the 15 years of syndicated time, we could, you know, consider something different at that point, but that would be the only way that could happen. So it would be far out in the future, and then it would only be based on syndicator releasing the population requirement, so it's not likely that it would happen.
And at that point, it could be addressed locally here. It would be a violation of the pilot and to probably the PUD as well.
I have no further questions.
I don't need it. Burgi, thank you for being here to answer questions. If you'd like to read that one as well.
I'm going to highlight the most important sections. This is ordinance number 19-449. It's an ordinance to authorize the payment of an annual service charge in lieu of taxes for residential units serving elderly, low-income, or persons and families in accordance with the State Housing Development Authority, which is Act Number 346 of the Public Acts of Michigan of 1966 as amended in matters related thereto. The city of Alpena ordains in Section 1 that the purpose is in compliance with the State Housing Act. Section 2 is simply the title. Section 3 is the preamble. Section 4 is the definition section, and specifically, Section E defines elderly as a person, excuse me, as a single person who is 55 years of age or older, or a household in which at least one member is 55 years of age or older, and all other members are 50 years of age or older as defined in the act. So that limits the applicability, if they're younger than that, they're just simply not eligible to reside there, and it would affect the pilot. Section 5 is the class of housing development. Section 6, I'll read in its entirety because this is kind of the meats and bones of it. The city acknowledges that the sponsor and the authority have established the economic feasibility of the housing development in reliance upon the enactment and continuing effect of this ordinance and the qualification of the housing development for exemption from all ad valorem property taxes and payment of an annual service charge in lieu of ad valorem taxes in an amount established in accordance with this section. In consideration of the sponsors' offer to rehabilitate, own, and operate the housing development, the city agrees to accept payment of an annual service charge for public services in lieu of all ad valorem property taxes that would otherwise be assessed to the housing development under Michigan law. Further effective upon the adoption of this ordinance and subject to the receipt by the city of the notification of exemption or other similar notification by the sponsor and/or the authority, the annual service charge shall be equal to 10% of actual annual shelter rents collected, less utilities paid by the sponsor. The housing development and the property on which it is constructed shall be exempt from all ad valorem property taxes from and after the commencement of rehabilitation of the housing development by the sponsor under the terms of this ordinance. And there are some further definitions. In the definition section, it defines what annual shelter rents mean and what utilities are exempt. Section 7 is a limitation on the payment of the annual service charge. Section 8 is the contractual effect of the ordinance. Section 9 is the payment of the service charge and when it's due. Section 10 is the duration. Section 11 is the publication and effective date, which simply says this ordinance shall become effective 10 days after publication of a summary of its provisions in a newspaper of general circulation in the city. Section 12 is a severalability section that says that for some reason one portion of this was struck down, it would not affect the totality of the rest of the ordinance. Section 13 talks about any repeal and any ordinances that are in conflict with this that would be repealed to the extent of such inconsistency, and that would be the first reading of this. You want me to read any part else of it?
All right. Thank you all.
I move your hearing.